Apology to the United States of America. Welcome to the Harbor Committee, May 2. We have in attendance Hillary Sayer, Sam Bolt, Lee Lee Bell, Doris Alvarez is running the program and our legal representation is Elizabeth Ail. And Brent Reiner is here from Nelson Pope Voorhees. The first item are the minutes. So we're going to do that for a second. Has anybody read the minutes? John?
He's not there yet.
He's not here yet.
I wasn't here in the last meeting, so.
Okay. Right there. I've read them and I didn't see any objections, so. No objections?
No.
Okay. You're good?
Yeah.
Hey, John.
How you doing?
So do I hear a motion to pass the minutes?
I'll make a motion to pass the minutes.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So noted, so the minutes have been approved because it were. Item number two, comments and questions. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to? Anything that remained in the Harbor Committee? Anybody on Zooms here? Great. Okay. For all business, David Burke and Anita Leahy, 62 Jolz Lane.
Hello, Lori Wiltshire, Phantom Services for the applicants.
Greetings.
I believe that Burke is online as well. So since we've seen you last, we've obtained our zoning board approval. We have obtained a letter of nonjurisdictional from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We've revised the survey twice, once to eliminate the pickleball court, and a second time to eliminate all proposed clearing. And then we submitted a construction protocol as was requested by, I believe, Mary Ann.
Oh, no pickleball?
No pickleball. No path to the, there's a path, you can walk a path to the water, but you can create a path. The, um, the D C wouldn't allow any clearing than 100 feet of the pond here.
Yeah. There is an existing path there.
There is.
Yeah. And is it, is it just stone or crushed?
I don't think it's even stone.
Crushed whatever dirt?
Dirt with like leaf matter or chips. I don't think it's a solid purpose.
I don't have any further comments, Mr. Chandler.
Brent?
MPD has no comments at this time. I feel like the applicant has demonstrated that their response is completely to all the comments thus far. They are providing the non-protected, 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 they go for consistent with the chapter 35 requirements. Product meets all setback standards and as Spohshire has demonstrated, they're not proposing to do any additional clearing. So with the ZVA decision, I feel as though everything is in order. And we have no further technical comments.
Progress?
Definitely.
Is your client happy with the direction?
Yes.
Are you continuing to keep the ADU?
Yes.
You are great.
Yes, all the accessory structures remain and that's what the zoning board approved.
Yeah.
Having them in the front yard on the pond side. So not a problem, it's all done.
Right.
And I think, um, oh, yeah, maybe we can close here.
That's a good idea. I think.
We can.
Yeah, you can make a motion to.
Yeah, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to close.
You want to ask if anybody has any comments?
Right. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak up on this application?
There's no one else.
Yes, so it's, so let's, do I hear a motion to approve? Approve the public here.
I shall move.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So we're out of the public realm and we're going into.
Grant, ready decision or want an permit for the next meeting?
Sure.
So do you need to come back for the next meeting or can that just be done downstairs?
No, that's the, the permit will be drafted for introduction, presentation to the Harbor Committee for a decision at the June meeting. It's up to the applicant to say whether to be here or not. I would recommend they are here in case the committee has any final questions before they vote on permits. The term of language will be in place for you guys to make that decision at the June meeting.
Great.
Okay, let's do it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to?
Don't leave yet, don't leave yet.
I'll make a motion to close them.
No, we've done that, now it's to vote, to vote on the.
We made a motion to adjourn it to the next meeting.
Right.
For wetland permit.
Right. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Sorry.
So it'd be noted that we will revisit this at the June meeting.
And so the next meeting is June 6.
Thank you.
I was gonna tell you.
Thank you.
Bye.
This is some old phone, I think.
Yeah. Well, I'd just say that it was an interesting evolution of that project and I think that's to be acknowledged and I appreciate that we went through all of that. 174 Main Street, that has been
Tabled.
Tabled, correct? Okay. All right, discussion items. Oh. Yeah, do I hear a motion to table 174 Main Street?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so noted, so.
And the next meeting is June 6.
Okay, hopefully they'll have their.
So what's the status of 22 Long Point?
That was adjourned.
Adjourned.
Okay.
Also, yes, the applicant requests to return the, to the June meetings.
Okay, so we can go with discussion item applications. The first up is 53 Bay Street. Is there someone here, Bay Street?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Billy Imperial from BMA Architects in Bridgehampton. Thank you for your time. With me is Brian Brogan from PW Coresurf. We just wanted to have an informal discussion with you. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the applications that we've submitted. Just a, kind of just a, kind of looking for your guidance on the next step for this, for this project, but just a description of what we have in mind, the owner has in mind is to basically make some site improvements and some improvements to the architecture as well. I don't know if you've been, you guys are probably, I would imagine that you've been to 53 Bay Street. I have pictures that you would like to see, but we basically want to just improve what's there. There are, within that application, there is a demolition plan that we, that our office had included. And then there's a plan that shows some of the post spaces, but it would just be held to within the interior, interior operations. And then the exterior would be involved with maybe, with new roof materials and new siding materials, moving around some windows and doors. We don't know exactly what that is. We don't have to go to ARB for that. But Brian, if you have any questions, Brian, Brian could run you through some of the civil stuff.
What's the scoop with the fish market?
Yeah.
Fireman, it's the meat party.
So there is a patio, thank you, I forgot to mention, there is a patio, a proposed patio that we're adding up there. You can see if we did a, like a super, a survey, a superimposed survey. And where, I do have, I do have the CO as well too that shows, but we're looking to use that as a fish market under the, you know, mercantile, which within that CO, CO escape side, we can add on mercantile. I have actually a copy that you might, I have stuff that's all here. Can I bring this up here?
And is it, are these little round things benches where you sit or is this tables?
Yeah, so this is very just placeholder right now, but the idea would be to have, would have tables in here and something to kind of draw some people to the, you know, in the community there as well too and also serve the marina.
So will you be running a restaurant out of there or raw food or?
No, it's just, we're just, just, it would just be held as a market is what it would be if somebody wanted to. I mean, the idea was if somebody wanted to eat there, they would be able to do that, but
Okay.
That, this is see here, right here, we look down, this kind of gives a description of the, of the CO. And then the last one describes mercantile.
So what's the definition of mercantile, Elizabeth?
Uh, well, I have put up, there's tables in the code, but are you within 150 feet of wetlands or surface water?
So Brian, we're, we're way outside of that, right?
I gotta hear.
Wonder if there's fish on it.
Local fish? I mean, are the fish coming in from boats will be processed there and, or is it just?
It's a good, that's a good question.
Or is it just brought in as
I, I don't know.
Old sailed already and then re, resold there?
Uh, it's a great question. I don't have that direction from the owner, but we certainly could find that and provide that.
I'm not sure if bears on the approval area, but it.
I like the idea, I just, I don't know if it.
I don't see.
You don't like the idea?
No, I do, I don't see them, there's, there, you know, have you been reading about all this, you know, fresh fish and fish to, you know, most of the fish we get out here is going, going down New York first, going to the Fulton and then coming back here. Very little is.
I doubt that you got any fishing boats that are going to be selling stuff right here, but.
To my knowledge, that's not the owners intention to do that. Maybe keep it as, you know, the yacht yard as is. And as far as how efficient getting in there, we could.
So this is Lou, this is Lou's old office here?
Uh, yeah.
And then this is where the bait shop was, tight lines was?
Exactly, yep.
And then you're putting in bathrooms here?
We would do ADA bathrooms in there.
Showers?
And, uh, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and showers. And then this forward space right in here would be, would be retail shop. And then we have a break room, assistant office and general managers office.
So are you going to keep the same kind of retail or are you going to change that out?
Um, I think it's going to probably stay to very, very close to.
Smaller, maybe.
Very close to what's in there right now.
Green parts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is the, this is the, where the eating will happen? This is the restaurant area?
So.
You sit on the patio.
I, I think there, I think there is something. The idea is to be able to at least have something there if somebody wanted to go outside. I actually don't know off the top of my head. I don't know if it's allowed to have tables out there.
Because you have also parking.
I think it's got to be held within, within there.
And this is all hooked up to the sewer plant, right?
Brian, could you, could you actually?
Could I just offer some insight on all?
No, it's not. It's not hooked up to the sewer plant.
Yeah. Go ahead.
He says small.
And Billy, Brian was just explaining to us that the plan that you have submitted shows two setbacks, one is 200 and some feet, the other one is 190 feet. But what is important to look at from our perspective is 190, I said. Then, then you've got the 25 regulations, extend your jurisdiction from the wetland boundary 150 feet length. So if they're not doing any activity within 150 feet of the wetlands, technically the Harbor Committee doesn't have any review in, 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 yeah, having a jurisdictional determination.
I think we're, we're just trying to be like, just transparent with everybody. The owners want to cooperate with, with the village and.
It's, it's an important distinction.
Yeah.
Because we already have an application pending for this property. There's an application pending for a reconfiguration of the marina operations in the boat basin.
Correct.
So the question is whether or not you want to merge the, the projects into one and have the Harbor Committee review it all as one. Or if you want to keep them separated and the work outside of 150 feet will go without the need for Harbor Committee review. And the work within 150 feet will stay within the Harbor.
Yeah.
That's the way the code is written.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
So we can ask Liz to offer a legal interpretation on that, but based upon what you submitted, the patio and the building appear to be more than 150 feet.
Yes.
And you may just want to seek that interpretation.
Okay.
And, and then the Harbor Committee can weigh in on that, or the building department can make a determination as well, but.
Yeah. Excuse me, I don't, you say there's already a pending application for something at the site?
Yeah, what's the status of that application?
It's under technical review.
What, what is it?
There are.
A modification of, of the marina, I think it's actually reducing the overall number of boats, let's just leave 33 to 31.
I think they're keeping the same number.
Okay.
We're still looking at all of it, but they're, they're reconfiguring the entire layout of, of the floats and, and the piles in the marina. My guess is to accommodate different sizes or styles.
So that's not something that was submitted to us?
That's already under your review. It's under technical review, it just hasn't made it to the public podium yet.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think, you know, when you do things like this, it's always best to do everything all together at once, so that when you're doing CRA for the, the boats or whatever the slips.
Yeah.
It incorporates this work as well, because it's, I don't know, otherwise it could be considered, considered segmentation under CRA. Depending on what action you have, like what, what level of reviews are plotted under.
Absolutely.
But I, so I think you should consider, look at, look at the other application and consider coming with all of it.
Okay.
Um, so this, and then it would come to this board for certain, as well as the other boards. And I think you would also need site plan review from planning board and ARB.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Site plan review from planning board would be for, would that be for them?
The building.
For the buildings.
Okay, even what the, even if.
And patios and whatever else you're doing to the site, to the extent you're changing sites. Specific, you know, I don't know what you're doing, but you have to take a look at that.
Okay.
At code and see if what you're doing triggers that there, because it's a commercial site.
Parking too, Liz?
And if you have any parking or anything else, that would require site check and view.
Site.
And then the planning board would probably conduct the CRA and could coordinate the piece floors that were, there would be one CRA review as opposed to three separate, you know, reviews for CRA.
And then.
Find coordinate and review.
And then after that, we would probably, it would probably go to AR, we would prepare a package and that would go before the ARB as well too. And then get that approval and then we could submit for building permits.
Correct.
Okay.
And of course, this, this is your choice, it's just.
Yep, understood.
So basically we want to be comprehensive.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, yeah, we'll go back and talk.
I think it would be difficult for any board to analyze it without the whole package together.
I understand, yeah, yep.
Appreciate you coming here.
No, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
I know you're busy.
No, it's, it's.
Do you want to take us back?
Yeah. The oldest business in St. Harbor, right?
Yeah.
That's continuous business.
What's that?
I think it's the oldest continuous business in St. Harbor.
Oh, interesting, okay. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you very much, thank you. Elizabeth, so do we need to make a motion on this or?
No, it was a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item is 244 Redwood Road.
Yes, I, good evening, my name is Martin Sosa from Archaeologica, we're the architects for the project and representing the owner and we're here just to get a sense of some sort of direction as far as what we're proposing here. The line itself, Redwood Road is, is currently restricted, that it's, the existing structure is within the 75 foot Atlantic set gap. So, and it's also within the FEMA E6, which is another factor, but I think what, what we're proposing to do is add a 500 split division to, to the, to the second story. And then extend the, the walkout basement to, to extend out to the other side of the existing deck. So in a sense, in essence, we're not enlarging the footprint. They're not coverage, not cleared coverage. We're just working within the constraints of the existing lines. And the structure. The property is not directly on the water, it's situated adjacent to two waterfront properties. On kind of pad corner to the two.
So you're not expanding the footprint, only going up?
We're going up and, I mean, if you consider the, the covered drag and the clear from the lead, we're just extending the interior space within those bounds.
Just trying to, I thought, I, I thought I knew exactly where this is and now I'm a little bit confused, I just want to.
Yeah, I think it's right past Yale. There's, I think BMA is actually.
It's right, it's on the corner there.
It's, uh, it's like a house over past that corner, past the corner. BMA just finished a project that's actually waterfront, two houses of west of here, in the area.
Do you have anything that shows, it's, does anything that shows its proximity to the other properties?
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to see the line weight on.
The line weight on your first sheet is tough.
Yes, it was a kind of, yeah.
Where are setbacks on this thing? Why is tough to read?
Yeah, well, we're, 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 we're well within setbacks, it's just that the line is still restricted, we can't, we can't extend it into the, the backyard and further into our, those are the, the redundous plans.
Maybe seeing it.
So in the first sheet, the shaded area, you're going to have to help me here, is the proposed basement under the deck?
Right, correct.
Okay.
It's about 304 square feet, I believe.
And what, how far is that to wetlands?
Well, as you can see, the, the 75 foot setback is almost at the front of the house.
I can't see it.
Yeah, it's right through the. This is the, this is the 75.
This is the radius of the 75.
And here somewhere.
And this is, there's two points, I guess, where they're considering the wetlands.
Which is the other one?
Uh, this one.
Oh, right, so that, so, yeah, so it's almost entirely
Yeah, it's.
Within the setback. And this is the only thing that you're proposing.
Which is under existing deck. And is that deck conforming?
Well, I think at the time with the house built in the 60s, it was probably not as restricted as it is now, so I think it was built.
What's the material of the, is it, will it be an open space underneath there? Is it?
Well, right now it's open, there's some.
You're going to just enclose it entirely?
Uh, we're enclosing it, yes, and, and just capturing.
Yeah, I mean, you can't have an open deck with a closed basement, so.
Well, maybe it's a screen portion, I don't.
So this is the existing structure.
Yeah, right.
You can see that, so that, that shaded area represents the, the area we're imposing. This is the scene from the street front, so we're, we're adding a second floor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This, so it's kind of this funny wooden deck that meanders down through.
Yeah, that's, that's the one. It needs a little clearance too. And then these are some, some kind of freebies, views of what it could look like if.
Could like, could look like.
Basically reconstructing the entire house.
Yeah. I mean, you're going to knock down the whole house, you're just going to.
I think we're, I, look, I, I think we can keep the corridor walls to some degree, I mean.
What about the basement?
Uh, the basement is, that's all concrete block, so that's.
You're going to keep that?
Yeah.
We, 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 we've had issues in the past where demolition was really required. All right, just to hope that you follow that, because structurally, to do all of this stuff might be.
I, you know, I, and I speak from experience, we're just finishing up a job in Montauk where the contractor took the liberty of raising the whole structure and the job was stopped for two years.
But isn't that a determination, isn't that a determination he's got to get from the building inspector that, you know, whether this will be a demolition?
Yeah, and that is kind of out of our idea.
No, no, I understand, I, I think my, my, my reason, the reason for being here is just to discuss what approvals we need, you know, subject to.
Where's the water table on this guy?
Uh, the water table.
It's pretty.
Is it piled up? So you're not going to hit water?
No, I mean, the, the house is, the house is on the slope.
Yeah.
So we're proposing a new IA subject system.
Oh, that's what I meant to ask, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so that's actually going to improve the property and hopefully get back something. But yeah, that's the other problem, it's, it's such a, such a steep slope that it's, it's also.
So again, what's the square footage of that first floor?
The floor plan is 1,000 square feet.
No, but I mean, the terrace, it's.
It's about 304 square feet.
So you'll get 600 additional square feet lower.
We'll get, well, no, the, the upper floor, the upper part of the deck will remain a deck. So we'll get 300 and then we'll add in this 580 square foot second floor. And that's all within the pyramid, which is noted restricted.
It is all pyramid, you say you're not asking for any relief?
No, there's no relief at all, so it's, we, we want to keep this short and sweet if possible.
You guys have a plan, these are good size.
Yeah.
Are you asking about the, the square footage, so you can see what it's going to look like here?
Yeah.
It's just closed here.
But this is simply just a patio right now, right?
It's a patio, yeah.
So it's just kind of, the, I guess the theory of the case is whether or not that pre-existing patio would be a sufficient basis for a, a wetlands waiver to build the, the extension onto the house, that, so that's just a philosophical thing, I think.
And how far is that from wetlands?
Well, it's, it's right in, it's, it's, it's right within the wetlands, it's, it's maybe 50 feet.
So it's in the wetland?
It's in the whole, the house is in.
No, in, in a buffer.
In the buffer.
It's not in the wetlands.
No, it's within, within the setback, yeah.
And then where's the 50 foot line? Are you, are you still at the 50 feet?
Uh, that is, uh, that.
I think you are.
Yeah, I think we should be, that's, it would be a third of, of this line, so, yeah, I think we would definitely.
So even this little.
Even that would be within 50.
Beyond 50.
Yeah, beyond 50, yeah.
This is 38.6, where is that? Sorry, where's the water here?
Yes.
It's a really confusing drawing.
Yeah.
Uh, that's just, I, I don't know, that's.
Draw, draw.
Draw that buffer. There's a, I'm talking.
This is the wetlands line.
Right.
Surveyed on the 20, on 2021.
Right.
And then this is the 70, one 75 foot line here.
Radius.
And the other one is, uh, you just showed me where the other one is.
That's this point.
Is it, the wetlands kind of?
I guess, right, there's a point there, is that?
Well, no, I didn't, I didn't see this, so in other words, this is also the wetlands line. Is that possible?
There, there's, I guess there's a point here that's considered.
It's sort of like this must. It is much closer.
Yeah, I don't understand what this is here.
That's the adjacent property.
So, do you have any pictures of it with the adjacent properties on the water so we can?
Uh, I can pull up an aerial.
Oh, see, I didn't realize this, I thought this was more.
Right, that that was the radius for the whole thing, but where's up here, that's what's confusing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
So from here.
Which one is it?
Um, it's right here, you, you're where the red dot is here, so that's the, there's a little.
A giant swale where the wetlands is surveyed all the way up to here. So it's, you know, so it's actually much closer to a wetlands.
This is in.
Upper line.
It's a 75 foot setback for a house, correct?
Correct.
And this is within the 50? This is within the 75 feet?
Not on the side, though.
Yes.
But where the new deck, the new enclosed porch is going, where the previous deck was, that is within the wetland, isn't that?
This is showing the new, the new deck as proposed.
From this point.
Or the, the.
And I guess they're showing the, the, the distance from the wetlands.
Which is thirty-eight.
Here. So this, this, if, if this is a radius of, of this thing here, and it's how many feet? Seventy-five?
Yeah.
So then over here, there's an equivalent seventy-five, right?
Yeah, so the whole.
So, so this thing is going muscle manos like this. Unless, unless my arithmetic is wrong, right? So this is about the same as this or maybe.
Yeah, but I think what we're missing is the, the wetland.
There's wetlands that come up on the side here.
From this point here. That's the wetland boundary there.
Right, so then, then that's even worse for you, right?
Right, so that would make this.
So this, this is.
It's line becomes irrelevant over here. It's only good to that point.
Right.
Wow.
So.
It's, it's even within the fifty foot.
Yeah.
Brett, what are your deep thoughts? Maybe just clearer plans?
You know, personally foremost, the board is always trying to make changes. You know, that's one of your objectives, to make sure that, you know, you apply the codes the way it's intended to be applied. And when we get to variances, the first order of business is to look at the chapter twenty-five standards and make sure the app goes through all of the, the steps of, um, identifying why the variance is necessary. The board can weigh it against all of the other decisions that it has made relative to its merits. So I, I think that while it's great that, um, Mr. Sosa came in and gave this presentation to you, the feedback to him is that he needs to make sure that he studies the, the standards and looks at the variance criteria and comes back to the board with a full set of plans and supporting documents to be able to address all of those variance standards. Um, because we can't, because you cannot, the setback requirements, you automatically trigger that variance.
Yeah.
And, um, a couple of the things that the board generally looks for is how to be offset those variances.
Just.
And part of that is thinking about practical alternatives. This looks like a whole house demo under construction.
Yep.
It's a, um, it's a block foundation. Um, the deck that they're proposing to put the improvements, quote unquote, under is no longer gonna be a deck. It's going to become.
A roof.
Roof, a roof deck.
Condition space.
On top of a conditioned space. So you're expanding the house towards the wetland, which is something the board generally tries to, to shy away from. So again, it leans heavily on the practical alternatives. So making sure that Mr. Sosa and the applicants are clear about those standards is the primary objective tonight. And then if, when a formal application comes in, we can do a technical review and provide feedback on the technicalities of the information that's being submitted.
Okay.
One of the things is looking at how you would mitigate the variances, that being, that better being offered. Offsetting, um, criteria sometimes is expansion of buffers, you know, is, is this an appropriate site? The board requires in its standards, a minimum of a fifty foot buffer, a covenant to buffers and members in the wetlands, um, for compliance. When you're looking at a variance, sometimes the, the, the objective is to offset the variance. And one of the things that we can think about is kind of let an expanded buffer be enough to warrant consideration for a variance being issued on a less than seventy-five foot structural setback.
And by buffer, do you mean revegetation of?
Oh.
Setback.
Okay, so yeah, so if we re, re, that, the back, uh, the back fifty feet from the, uh, from the wetlands, that might be something to consider.
Yeah, so this, it's a native vegetative environment, habitat appropriate. And again, there is a, a, an allowance. Yeah, two eighty-five, ninety.
Go through that whole section.
That is totally.
Especially ninety-four.
And another thing you're gonna wanna look at is since you can't provide a solid fifty foot buffer, which is a contiguous fifty foot span around the wetlands, you can't do that because the house is already there. The, the board allows for a variable with buffer. The equivalent of what a fifty foot solid.
Okay, elsewhere.
Yeah.
It could be amebyc. It could be a shape like.
So that it averages out.
All right, so I, I think that's, you know, I think the.
The other question is how, how tight are you on this lot? Could you take that volume and put it somewhere else?
Yeah. It's like, it's at the, at the front yard setback. So that would trigger a battery, getting, doing variance, uh, from the.
I think you guys should be, count yourself lucky that you have an existing foundation.
Exactly, there's no way we're building on this.
Right, and I, I would try to stay within that if I were.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, look, if we have to give this up, uh, then, you know.
You're gonna get a lot easier ride here.
Yeah, so I mean, you, she, she, you know, she.
Or anything that does happen should move toward the, uh, road.
Right, right, but we can't move, we can't extend into the road either because we're, we're at the, the setback.
Do, what's the distance approximately? Is there any measurement here from the wetlands that curve up?
Well, it's thirty, it's thirty-eight feet from, to there, so it's probably like twenty-five to, to, to those.
So it's, this corner is approximately twenty-five feet from the.
Yeah, I would, that would be my guess, maybe this is thirty-eight.
That's really tight.
Um, read, read the documents that.
Twenty-five D, yeah.
That, that attorney just gave you and when you do a presentation, um, pump up the volume on this guy.
Yeah, no, I will. This is, this is kind of, we just made the deadline.
That's fine. And also, um, when it gets to the point of re-vage, don't just.
I'll go higher than my, than my team.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. You've got significant trees around the house.
Uh, they're not native trees and, um, I think there's a hickory tree out front.
Okay.
So there, there's nothing there that's, um.
Does it, what about the village? Didn't they say there's, isn't there a new law regarding a twelve inch caliper? It's a tree, yeah, there's a tree preservation law you should take a look at.
Okay, and that would be, anything over a twelve inches?
Yes, I think it's twelve DPH, right?
But that's the purview of the building department, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. And in terms of getting approvals from other leg, uh, legislation or other branches of, uh.
Their boards?
Yeah, the boards. Would that be the planning board and the water, uh, uh, lands?
This is the wetland boards for the wetlands.
Okay, no, that I understand, but is it anything beyond?
And then the ARB, the ARB.
Yeah, the ARB, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, well, this is a good start. Thank you for much of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks.
Good luck.
One other comment? Yes, um, if you're, so, do you mind?
No. I don't make it easy.
Yeah, I just mentioned that.
Yeah.
But it's not even clear where the IA would go.
Well, you have to work that out.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, yeah.
He stays with the footprint of the building, puts in an IA system and does all those things.
But we don't allow that thing underneath the deck.
In a case.
What's that?
We don't put, allow that thing underneath the deck.
In a case like this, do we ask for a wetland survey? I mean, is it important to do that? Yeah, for him to get actual numbers on these.
Oh, yeah.
Of that, that's gotta be clear. It looks like he's got it, it's just, it's ambiguous.
Yes. I think this is sort of.
That has to be clarified.
Yeah, to just sort of get info, sure.
Okay, so.
Great.
I guess, um, help me here.
You guys skipped it. We'll go back to correspondence. Okay.
Really?
Sorry, yeah.
Correspondence. And I usually like correspondence.
So, yeah. It is the, um, the vice, you can have them last. I didn't get a revise.
Correspondence, uh, all right.
Thank you.
You're right, I didn't miss that. Um.
Oh.
Let's see. Okay, so item one, uh, in the Department of Correspondence.
One's reading, yeah.
One fifty-four Redwood Road, um, we're looking for the closer consistency review referral prepared by Nelson Pope Jorge regarding proposed in-kind, in-place replacement of the existing eighty-six foot retaining wall. Twenty foot north return and a fifteen foot south return.
As to that, you're not actually weighing in on whether or not you will be approving this. You're just saying to the Department of State that you received the referral. Um, you were recognizing that the applicant will also come to you for a formal, um, chapter twenty-five government permit.